Welcome to the regular city council meeting of Monday, May 22, 2017. This time can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Vice Mayor Klein is absent. Councilmember Rhino.
Here.
And Mayor Viera.
Here. Next, we will have the invocation by Pastor Adrian Condit, followed by the Pledge of Legions.
I'd like to say just a word before I pray. I'm not going to preach a sermon, guys. I'm just going to let you know it's a joy to be here tonight. It's been awhile since I've been, since you guys asked me to come back. I don't know, I must have prayed too hard last time or something. But anyway, it's a joy to be back. So let's bow our hearts in prayer. Our most gracious and loving Father in heaven, we come to you tonight with thanksgiving and praise, first of all, for your great love, the love of God that sent His only begotten Son into this world to give His life that we all could have forgiveness of sin and receive the great gift of eternal life. Now, Father, we're here for this council has some business to take care of. Now, some of this business is going to be tough. You're going to have to vote very tough sometimes. So I'm praying that you'd give them the wisdom that they need. Because sometimes, in our own wisdom, we run a little short. But we need sometimes to reach up and reach out and receive that wisdom that comes from God to help us make clear and direct decisions. So I pray for them tonight that you would give them that wisdom that they'll make decisions that will be in effect for this great city. Even though we're small, we're still a great city. And we love you and we pray now that you would take care of this, help them to take care of the business at hand tonight. And we thank you for it, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And amen.
Thank you Pastor Condit. It's always a pleasure. Moving on, we have no presentations this evening, so we'll move to Citizens Communications to Council on Matters Not Included on the Agenda. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participation in City Council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Before we get started with public comment, just as a reminder, again, at the top of the podium, we have the green, yellow, and red light. When the green light goes on, you will have five minutes, or excuse me, yeah, five minutes to start speaking. When we get to one minute left, the yellow light will come on, and then when your time has expired, the red light comes on. So I do ask that everyone try to adhere to that as much as possible. With that, I do have a few speaker cards here, and I will go ahead and start with Robin Johnson.
Good evening, Council, and good evening, members in the audience. My name is Robin Johnson, and I'm a health educator at Blaker Kinzer Junior High School here in town. I'm also the FAST JV advisor, which stands for Protecting Health and Slamming Tobacco, and we have grown an organization at our school that's over 150 members wide. We pick up litter in our parks. Every year, we picked up over 10,000 pieces of litter in just about an hour in our park this fall. I was asked by the County Office of Ed if we would be willing to be a pilot program because our FAST JV program was so large and successful. And we decided that we would make history in Series, California. We're the only junior high in a very large region of California that took on this role, and it is a role called Photo Voice. And we are very privileged to be here tonight to share our voice with you. The premise of this pilot program was that our students would look at their city through a 14-year-old lens. These adolescents had a very open selection on what they wanted to view and how they could make the city better. Ironically, out of seven students in Photo Voice, every student had the same view. And it had to do with making our city more beautiful and with the problems of litter. So when you look at their photos, those photos are their own photography and their own words. That's what Photo Voice is. It's raising up leaders to see things and be proactive in how they would want to make positive changes. These girls are scholars at Blaker Kinzer. Virginia on the end, raise your hand. She is one of our valedictorians. So we're very proud of these girls. And there was a few gentlemen in our team as well, but we just wanted to share. You know, my goal is that I can raise up great, great young adults and that they would want to be educated and contribute to our city and not want to move somewhere else that's prettier and nicer because I'm in love with Series, California. I've been here for 26 years, and I know these kids love Series, and we want Series kids to come back and make our community great. So with that, I'd just love for you to take a look at what they see. Some of their photos are what they walk by when they go to school. They're pictures of things that they have to walk around and walk through, maybe just to walk down a path to get to McDonald's out on our side of town. There's lots of little issues, and like I said, all seven kids had their own direction, and through their own lenses, they picked this one theme. So I thought it was important enough today if I delivered it to all of you because I know you care about Series and you care about us. So I'd like the girls to just come up and at least say their name. I appreciate that.
Hi, I'm Belinda Bohati.
Hi, I'm Najesli Ochoa.
Hi, I'm Virginia Moore.
And we are Photo Voice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. It's impressive to see that, and I wanted to thank you, Robin, and the students for doing this. Obviously, trash pickup is a big issue here for the city. I don't know which staff, and I don't want to put any of them on the spot. Does anybody know how many tons of trash we pick up annually? I know it's a massive number.
I don't have that number, but I know it's a very large number.
It's many tons. And so I want to thank you for helping because it sets an example, and hopefully, others will pick up on that and won't use the park sidewalk as just somewhere where they can litter. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much. On just one other sidebar on that, on the display boards that you have, are you putting those up somewhere or for people to see, or is it just something you've had in the school?
I'll answer that for you real quickly. We did a culminating project on our campus where we had some representative from SCOCOM and be with us, and so we had a message that went out seven boards wide to both 7th and 8th graders. We do want the problem to, we want their awareness to start at, you know, our grade levels, and we talked about what we can do on our campuses. And other than that, we haven't been anywhere with our boards. So I wanted to validate their voices and their effort. They gave up time and lunches and walking field trips in order to make these. We did go to a fruit and veggie festival with the county office, and we were able to be along a lot of other health exhibits. So we got it out into the Series community a little bit, so.
Well, maybe Tracy might be able to find an outlet where...
Great. That would be wonderful.
Sure.
All right. Thank you, you guys.
Great, thank you. Okay, with that, I do have another speaker card. Gary Condit.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Staff. My name's Gary Condit. I'm a sophomore at Series High School. Every day for the last two years, I've went to school using Fifth Street, which is, you know, main entrance for students. There's no school zone signage, no crosswalks, no warning signs. This is a serious safety issue and a potential problem for the city and a real danger for students' lives. Tonight, myself and less than 1,000 students and teachers would like to submit to the council our signatures we collected, who I have a group of students who I'd like to stand real quick, and I'd get a round of applause for their help that they've given me. You know, I think it's great we have young people getting involved. I think it's great for our future generations. Now, I was informed since 1994, we have had no one get hit on Fifth Street. However, we have had one student get hit on his bike about two months ago, and we also had a security guard get hit in 2011. I would like to say that Fifth Street has a drop-off and pickup area in Series, that it is the only drop-off and pickup area in Series that does not have any signage, no crosswalks, and it's very unsafe for our students. And I think we really need to consider this. Under California Vehicle Code 22352, we are required to have school zone signage on Fifth Street. I would like to add that my principal, Linda Stubbs, and our Series High administration is in support of this effort. Thank you very much.
Okay, next, I have Anthony, is it Gerads? Is that correct?
Want to follow him? He was good. Good evening. My name's Anthony Gerads. I'm just speaking on behalf of the same thing. I'm one of the teachers from Series High School. I've been teaching biology there for five years. And I'm talking from the perspective of a teacher and also a track coach. We regularly use Fifth Street to drop off and pick up our athletes. And several times, I've seen athletes have to almost play human frogger as they go across the street on both weekdays and on Saturdays to get across there. Today in class during my 5th and 6th period, I just did an impromptu poll with them, and I asked, "How many of you, by show of hands, have to cross Fifth Street?" And about three-quarters of my students raised their hand. And I said, "Okay, how many of you have ever had a close call on Fifth Street? Or how many of you ever get scared on Fifth Street?" Almost every single one of those same students raised their hand. And they said it's because there's no specific place for them to cross, and they said that they kind of just have to go between the cars whenever they see a chance. And I know personally, driving on Fifth Street, there's been several times where I've had to hit my brakes between the hours of 2:45 and 3 o'clock because I'm driving along and some kid has to dart between two cars, and I don't see them until they're in the middle of the road. And so I feel this crosswalk will be a very big benefit. Like I said, especially from a teacher perspective. We already have enough to worry about. This would be one less thing that we have to worry about that our kids can come back to school the next day safe.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I've had a chance to speak with the city manager a little bit about this, and what we've agreed to do is there is a process that we go through for requests of crossings and other things. And so he has indicated that we will put this on the list and we'll start the process that we have to go through for qualifying a traffic signal, or excuse me, a crosswalk, which includes us dealing with the school district and other things. So I don't know if there was anything else, Mr. Wells, you wanted to add to that?
Well, in addition, we do have, we have received two separate planning grants. One is specifically related to safety-type issues. That grant will allow us to study these types of issues in a little more detail than we normally would be able to with the funding of that. We also received a grant related to an active transportation plan for our whole city. So that would address city-wide these types of issues. In addition, we look for opportunities such as this with our Safe Routes to School programs to seek grants to do that. All of the crosswalks that we've put in town over the last five years have all been done through grant processes. But it starts with the first step, which is studying it, making sure it's an eligible project. Unfortunately, it does take some time, but we are aware of this concern and are moving it through the process to get the studies completed.
Okay. Okay, with that, so just to assure you that we do have that, we'll start that going through the process. Okay, if you could just hand it to the city clerk. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak on a non-agenda item? Please come forth and state your name.
Leonard Shepard, 2841 Fowler Road. You know, this is the best thing I have seen in this city council for a long time. Look at the number. I had to bring more chairs in. That's great. That's wonderful. I want to see all you young people here every city council meeting. Forget football, forget other things. This is your government. It belongs to you. It belongs to me. It belongs to everybody in this room. And that's why you should be here all the time. But I do want to point out one thing, Mr. Mayor. And I've been, I was in Toastmasters for several years, and the timing lights are nothing, no problem. But this is a speaker stand. That's a podium. You sit at the podium, and I speak from the speaker stand. Just a little bit of, or straighten things out there. Just remember that. This is not a podium. A podium is a raised dais from which people sit. So you up on the podium, and I'm down here on the floor at the speaker stand. And, but you know, here it is, the first day, 102 on my back deck. And I look around Series, and I applaud these young people with the photos and stuff because they care. But I look around Series, and I see front yards with weeds that are dead, and they're dry. Somebody walks by, all it takes is a spark, and Chief Nichols and Captain Spawney and the rest of the guys are out there trying to save somebody's home, somebody's livelihood, somebody's life. And it just, it really bothers me. And I know code enforcement has a lot of stuff to do, but my gosh. Maybe we can do something with, I don't know, the billing and stuff? You send stuff out to all these people? Maybe just something in there that says, "Clean up your yard. Cut down the weeds. Don't be a fire hazard." I don't know, but it just, it just seems to me that the pride in Series has just kind of dropped in some places. But anyway, I want to thank these young people for being here. This is just really great.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council on a non-agenda item?
Hi, guys. And just, as you said, a non-agenda. I'm standing up here as a grandparent, as a person that uses that. I don't really need a microphone because I have a loud voice. But the children, you know, Gary's already did all the homework on it. He knows that whatever the statistics are, whatever you need to know. So I think they should just put it on a rush-through, and they could probably go out there tomorrow and paint that crosswalk and be done with it and save you guys a lot of work.
Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Felipe Martinez. I'm also a sophomore at Series High, and I'm also a resident on Fifth Street. I believe I like, you know, I'm here to support Gary Condit. And I believe the fact, I like how the fact that you guys are going to put it through the process of getting the crosswalk on Fifth Street. But how long will this process take? I'm not asking for a direct answer right now, but how long will it take? You know, in between the time between here and the process of getting the crosswalk, how long will it take? What if a kid gets hit between there? What if a kid's in danger between there? I understand the fact that it will take time. It will take time. But I want to make sure that this process gets addressed as soon as possible. I mean, I, as a kid with three little cousins that live on that street, and they love to play outside. If a ball goes out into the middle of the road, they're little. Of course, they're going to try to chase the ball. I'd love to be out there watching them all the time, same with my parents. But you know, we're people. I have sports. You know, like I said, and I cross that street every single day. Sometimes more than once a day. I cross it to get to school, to get home from school, to go back to sports. And I see the struggles that we go through every day. It's just to cross that street, just like they said. It's kind of scary just to walk through because just living there, seeing that back and forth, these cars go by over the speed limit, completely over the speed limit. Not, I understand at 25 miles per hour. And the fact that even after school hours, that the speed limit does go up, I believe. But they completely overdo it. I see cars going down the street at 60 miles per hour. And with the crosswalk, I strongly believe that there will be a change. I strongly believe that we should get it addressed as soon as possible and get this done as soon as possible before we have no casualties, period. There, that's it. That's all I've got to say.
Sure. Is there anyone else? Okay, with that, we will move on to appointments to boards and commissions. We have none. Conflict of interest declaration. Is there anyone on the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the consent calendar items? One unfinished business item or the one public hearing item? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be acted, excuse me, accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. At this time, is there anyone on the council that would like a consent calendar item pulled for further discussion?
Items 6 and 8.
All right, is there anyone in the audience that would like an item pulled other than item 6 or 8? Okay, then I'll bring it back to the council for direction on the remaining items.
Move to adopt items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 7.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes 401.
Okay. Item number 6, Resolution Number 2017-039, approval of a continued participation in the county-wide Fire Investigation Unit, FIU, comma, continued assignment of the fire captain and staffing to backfill the position. Councilmember Rhino?
Okay, I understand that 165,000 is reimbursed by the county and that currently Captain Snyder's fully burdened cost is 182,945, which does not include the overtime. So that puts us on the hook for 17,945 plus whatever overtime is, whatever overtime there is. Then we've also backfilled that position, which means we're paying for only a portion of Captain Snyder, but now we've added another captain, which we did, I think, a year or two ago to backfill.
Three years ago.
Three years ago.
182,000 is the fully burdened rate for fiscal year 1718.
Okay.
It's the coming year.
Okay. So my concern is that, I mean, it looks good that you have two additional firemen, but one is really in the city. But the amount it's costing us because of our budget constraints we're having. But I think my bigger concern is that we know we're going to be talking to Modesto and the county about possibly consolidation. And I don't really want to see any kind of commitment for a contract until we know what we're going to do. I don't want us to commit to something that... We don't even know if we're going to still have service here or we're going to contract with someone else. That's probably my biggest concern, is that it's going to somehow be like a safer grant that affects what we can do with our own fire department.
Mr. Wells, would, just a question, would it impact us if we held off on this?
No. This, I mean, the agreement is between us and the county, this consortium. This would be the third year of the agreement. There's exit clauses in that agreement. If we were to change our participation, a couple of things to keep in mind. One, the overtime piece of it is Captain Spawney especially, I'm sorry, Captain Snyder. They're able to fill shifts that we have vacant. You know, so the overtime is not just for their overtime as an FIU investigator, but as part of our team, that they can still fill in for vacancies within the captain ranks across the organization. So that is a benefit of having another body that's able to fill in for those overtime positions. In addition, the, having that resource on the fire investigations on arson does protect us from a significant liability if we don't have an arson investigator. Previously, that role was handled by our police department, and it is a onerous and difficult task. This, called a consortium, but this regional approach allows us to have, under the authority of the district attorney, investigators that are having tremendous success in achieving convictions for arson-related activities. And so if we were to not participate, we would lose some of that protection. Not to say that we couldn't do it some other way, but it would put the burden most likely back on the police department with the staffing that we had, or try to do it ourselves. The regional model has proven to be much more effective. The longer-term perspective would be, the hope is now that we've kind of established that this model is working, with next year's agreement would likely be a two-year agreement, and all of the costs would then be revisited between the agencies. You know, up until this current year, our costs were pretty darn close to covered with our increased expenditures that we're seeing on the increase of their health insurance, our retirement costs, and workers' comp. Those have increased our fully burdened rates, which has got us out of, you know, the step of the original context of the agreement. So the grand scheme of things, the $17,000, what we get back from that, in my opinion, far exceeds that $17,000.
And the agreement goes through June 30?
The current agreement is June 30 this year. This agreement that would be approved by this body would go to the county for approval for the following year. Yeah, for the following fiscal year, through June 30 to 2018.
Okay. Did you have any other questions?
No.
Okay, at this time, I'll open up to the public. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? Okay, there you are. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for direction.
Move to approve Resolution Number 2017-039.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
No.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes 311.
Item number 8, Resolution Number 2017-041, approving the City of Series Transportation Development Act claim for transit purposes for fiscal year 2017-2018, authorizing the city engineer to sign and submit the claim to the Sassos County Council of Governments. Councilmember Rhino?
The penalty that we received for $22,710, I wasn't sure if we can take that from what we're requesting or if it's going to come out of our general fund.
It cannot come from any of the claims. It has to be a separate funding source. They defer to that as a general fund, but it's not this funding source. So the way it works is that penalty reduces our eligibility in this current year, so our claim is reduced by that $22,710. So it's not eligible to be reimbursed by these funds from Stanco.
Okay, so the 22,710...
Would be a budgeted item. Correct.
Out of general fund.
Correct.
Okay. Then I, another question is, the dial-a-ride. It wasn't penalized because there was a grace year available, is what I read. It was, I think it was for 1516, and that it wasn't penalized.
Both programs get a grace period, and then the second year. But dial-a-ride met the fair box that second year.
I guess I didn't read that in the staff report. I saw that CDAR was at 7.87, and then it said it fell short of its 10% ratio, but wasn't penalized because it had a grace year available?
It only missed one year, correct. On the other one, we missed two years. So grace year for one penalized the second year.
Okay, so does that mean that if their ratio, dial-a-ride's ratio isn't 10% for this fiscal year we're in now, that we can have another grace period? Are we going to have to pay a penalty next year?
We have an exemption now that we made the significant changes that this council approved in December. We now have a two-year exemption.
I saw that as well, but I thought we made this...
That applies to both.
To both of them, okay.
Because dial-a-ride is now restricted to seniors and handicapped.
Okay. And then on one of the attachments, I saw Measure L is projected, I suppose, for 1718 to be 15,000, but that's not a guarantee, or is it?
No, that is a guarantee.
That is a guarantee.
That is part of our claim. Correct. Measure L has multiple components to it, and one of the components, 7% of the overall Measure L allocation, is for transit purposes. And so that is a specific allocation that each city can use to supplement their transit operations. So we're using...
But it doesn't matter what the county actually receives in the increased tax?
Our actual allocation is about three times that for this year. We're only asking for a limited amount for this current year. And it would carry over, and we'd be able to use it in future years as well.
Okay, and then on the transfer claim financial plan, it says the fair box revenue is going to be at $45,000 in fiscal year 1819? Is that how I read that?
Which page are you on?
It would be on page 3. It would be on page three of the transit claim fiscal year twenty-seven eighteen, under section one, revenue for operations.
Fairbox, the one thirty-five, yes.
No, no, it's it's thirty thousand for twenty seventeen.
You're looking at the next page.
Then twenty eighteen, it's gonna be forty-five thousand?
Correct.
How can, how, our Fairbox is gonna go up fifteen thousand in a year?
That is the projection.
Okay, it's projected.
Correct.
Those are my only questions.
Okay, any other questions of the council? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for direction.
Move to adopt resolution number two thousand seventeen forty-one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember DeRocette.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero one.
Thank you. We'll move on to unfinished business, we have one item tonight, item number nine. Final adoption of ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash ten thirty-nine. Zoning Ordinance Text Amendment, Z O T A seventeen dash oh four, and a development agreement for the Case Manufacturing Project located at forty-one eleven Brewmaster Drive. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This item this evening accumulates the efforts that have been put in place for the last couple of months trying to get this agreement to the finish line. And we are here this evening, so no presentation this night. You've heard enough from me in presentations on this topic. We're happy that this agreement got put together, and Mike and his family are here this evening, as well as many of his supporters. And this is a project that has been quite a learning experience for myself, and I'm thrilled to be a part of it. And we have a great partner here, and I look forward to a long relationship. And Mr. Reynolds is here in the evening to add a few words, and then I got one other comment I wanna make once Mike's done, any comments?
Okay, are there any questions of staff on this?
I have a clarification, I have a question on. I know that on the ordinance, we took out the line that the planning commission was recommending that the council use the fees for public safety. But when I look at the DA, I don't see where it was taken out of there, on page two of the, page two of the DA. It's item K at the bottom of the page.
Is that just an oversight, by any chance?
I'm sorry, what page were you on? Again, it's a whereas, it's a historical of what the, the planning commission did make their recommendation, but it has no weight or bearing because we took that out of the ordinance of the implementing action. So it's a whereas of a defining fact, but it doesn't change the activity. But if, council, we can make that change if you're uncomfortable.
I would like it, I would like it removed since we did remove it from the ordinance. And it doesn't look in the DA that it's a whereas like it was in the ordinance, so that's, that's the only thing that I would like to see.
Let's, just make, in your, in your motion, make sure you include that.
Alright, any other comments? This time, I'll open up for Mr. Reynolds.
First of all, I just wanna tell you guys thank you. It has been a challenging subject, and to come home and have your guys' blessing has been great. All the way from the fire and police, to have them come out and be supportive, and have them being able to work together is something that I don't think I could ever dreamed of. But to be home, I just wanna tell you guys thank you. I don't know how it happened, but it's Case's birthday today, and he's four, and I don't think we could've put that together better. But, you know, Toby, for the endless weekends and things that we've done, it's been a learning process for all of us. And I just wanna tell you guys thank you, and I look forward to being home and many more years of being a part and contributing of Series. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item?
Happy birthday, young man. And in twenty, thirty years, he's gonna be doing great things, I'm sure. He is gonna be a leader because his parents are leaders. And that really, really makes a big difference in a child's life. And thank you, city council, for doing something that reaches far, far beyond Series. But it started here, and it'll go worldwide, I'm sure. There'll be people who are modeling after Mr. Reynolds' program. And it won't be a pilot program anymore, it'll, in Series, it'll be a driving force.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Okay, with that, I'll bring it back to the council for direction and more discussion.
Am I understanding this right, that this is to manufacture marijuana for this young man here?
That is correct, cannabis oil.
Okay, the question that I have, and I've dealt with marijuana a long time with my, one of my members of my family. It hasn't been good. So I'm wondering just how are you going to monitor this to keep it from spreading into many other stores? Now, I'm in favor, if this helps this young man, I'm in favor. But I am not in favor of turning it loose to everything that comes along. I think we ought to put some kind of a lid on it and hold it to just medical, medical. And I don't, we have to, because this thing could spread all over Series. It's probably already spread to some extent, only it's not under the monitoring circumstances. But I, being a minister of the gospel and dealing with, I was a counselor in a drug rehab program, and ninety percent of the drug problems started with marijuana. And so it spreads on and on. But if it's, if you can monitor this, if the city can monitor this, keep it under control, and not allow it to have a store on every corner, somebody manufacturing marijuana on every corner or all over. And use it for the purpose that this dear couple wants to use it for. And I think there are some medical values to marijuana, there's got to be. And so this is my, my thought. I, and I'll bear myself get involved in this, you guys know that. But I'm, I want you to be very cautious on what we're doing here as a city, as a city council. And God bless you, and God bless this young man.
Well, thank you Pastor Condit, and just to assure you, you've kind of gotten here about a minute before midnight, so to speak, and we've, we've actually addressed many of your concerns in multiple meetings that we've had. So I think we feel, rest assured, that there won't be the problem of one of these popping up on every street corner, so. So I want you to know that.
That is fine, so, with that, is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Okay, with that, I will bring it back to the council.
Move to adopt ordinance number two thousand seventeen ten thirty-nine with the deletion of the last sentence of section K of the development agreement.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocette.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero one.
Thank you, congratulations, and Mr. Wells had a comment.
Yeah, just wanted to, since things worked out very well, as Mike and I were working on dates to get to here, and figured out that this date was Case's birthday, I just couldn't pass the opportunity that I think would be appropriate if we sing him happy birthday. So, with that, Mayor, if you'd like.
Alright. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Case. Happy birthday to you. Well, thank you very much, and we look forward to, you know, a nice, long relationship with Case Manufacturing, so. Thank you, with that, we will move on to the next item, which is a public hearing to consider resolution number two thousand seventeen dash oh four two, updating the fee for fireworks booth sales.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Let's give it a minute, give it a minute, then. Okay, Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mayor. A similar process took a little bit longer, was the, per council direction, was revisiting how we do fireworks that started after last, last July, and so we started that process a couple of months ago with the adoption of the ordinance, where we can now pursue illegal fireworks as a municipal code violation, allowing us some more teeth on that process. The second or last part of that for now is looking at our safe and sane process and issuing the permits to the nonprofits that are able to sell those within our city limits. So the ordinance that we adopted provided the basically same framework that we had before, but the one piece that was not completed was the item for you this evening, which is increasing the user fee, or the fee that's paid by the folks selling the safe and sane fireworks to cover the costs associated with the city issuing those permits. So what we did was looked at our previous user fee study that was done in two thousand and eleven, updated that information with the current costs, employee costs, as we've discussed before. And the recommended fee to cover those costs is three hundred and ninety-nine dollars, that's an increase from the current fee of two hundred and eighty-two dollars. So staff recommends you conduct the public hearing, and this is by resolution, so it's not an ordinance per se, but with the conclusion, successful conclusion of the public hearing, we'd be able to implement this fee immediately and be able to send those out in our letters to our nonprofits to be able to have in place for this year's permit booths.
Okay. Any questions of staff on this item? Alright, I'll open up to the public, anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item?
Hi, I'm Aidan Mintero Moore, and coming from a person who is a part of a lot of nonprofits, like football, the American Legion, et cetera. How, I understand that about a hundred and twenty dollars around is the increase of the fee, thereabouts?
Hundred and nineteen or, hundred and seventeen, sorry, to be exact.
That might not seem like a lot, but in the situations that I've been in, this is oftentimes someone's number one form of fundraising, i.e. like football or the American Legion in a lot of cases as well. This, in my opinion, could later on affect scholarships, me and myself going on to college. Scholarships are a big deal, and I'm not looking for money myself, just, I know a lot of people who are in certain situations where that extra hundred dollars could make a break going to the school of their dreams, or in other cases, just going to school in general. It might not seem like a lot, I don't know if this ordinance could be changed, I'm not sure myself. But I do feel as though this could affect negatively on a lot of nonprofits in our city. Myself, just because I go through a lot of sports, that's my biggest idea. I'm not sure as the other nonprofits, like the churches or other people who do sell the fireworks. But in my experience, this has been one of the biggest fundraisers that a lot of people can do, because Series does have a large population for a small town, and we like to use our fireworks generously. So I feel as though this could affect everyone later on, mostly kids going on to college, or most kids who don't have the ability to pay for certain things, like paying for an application to a college. And that one hundred dollars might not seem like a large amount, but that's enough to fill out three, four, sometimes five college applications to schools that people are eligible to go to, but can't fund themselves due to family issues at home, and their only outlet is through sports or other nonprofit organizations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for further discussion or direction.
Move to approve resolution two thousand seventeen zero four two.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocette.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero one.
Okay, moving on to council member referrals, is there anyone in the council that would like to have an item placed on a future agenda? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to reports, I have nothing to report, councilmember Rhino?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember Lane?
Nothing.
Councilmember DeRocette?
Nothing.
Okay, we will start with Ms. Dean, I think, Tom?
How's your mayor?
Mr. Wells?
Couple announcements, Arbor Day, probably stealing some of Tracy's thunder, this Wednesday, one o'clock at Whitmore Park. So Tracy and her team have together a little celebration, so it's on your calendars, please try to attend. Measure H meeting is scheduled for June first, we had rescheduled that meeting, it was scheduled for last week. We updated that meeting to June first, six P M. here. And then another one of Tracy's items, probably, the Concerts in the Park series starts before our next council meeting on June sixth. So I look forward to everybody enjoying the concert series this year.
Okay, Mr. Westbrook?
Just an update on the general plan, we will be releasing the notice of preparation for the E I R. on Wednesday. It'll start a thirty-day review and comment period. For the E I R., the planning commission will hold a scoping meeting on June fifth, and then the scoping period for the notice of preparation will end on June twenty-third. But that's really the, kind of the initiation of the environmental work that'll start regarding the general plan.
Daryl, nothing? Mr. Smith? Ms. Nichols? Ms. Ferris? Great. Ms. McCoy? Supervisor DiMartini? Alright, with that, we will move to adjourn the open session, and we will move to closed session. Public employee discipline dismissal release, thank you.